Good afternoon, everyone. I'll call this meeting of Stratford City Council to order. And the begin this after afternoon's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Joining me in the council chamber today is Chief Administrative Officer Joan Thompson, Tatiana Defoe, our city clerk, and Chris Bantock, our deputy clerk. Counselor Ingram has provided her regrets for today's meeting. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof, Counselor Ingram? Or sorry, Counselor Ritzma?
Yes, in, I'm sorry, am I unmuted? I am unmuted. So in the in-camera session earlier today, I had one item. And then in the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee Agenda Item 8.1, Kelly's Lane. I declare pecuniary interest because I'm the owner of Kelly's Lane. And hard copies of those forms have been shared with the city clerk.
Thank you. Seeing the others. Item three is adoption of the minutes of the special meeting of council dated September 21st, and the regular meeting scheduled September 28th is their mover, Counselor Henderson, a seconder, Counselor Bunting. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. There is no agenda to be adopted for today's meetings. Item five is the report of the committee of the holding camera session. And item 5.1, at the September 28, 2020 session under the Municipal Act 2001, as amended matters concerning the following items were considered. Personal matters about identifiable individual as it relates to the youth representative to the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee. And a personal matter about an identifiable individual as it relates to a citizen representative to the Committee of Adjustment. There are two motions that follow from that meeting. And the first one is that Sammy Orr be appointed as the youth representative to the Energy and Environment Committee for a one-year term to September 30, 2021, or until his successor is appointed. Moved by Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor Vazalacos. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. The second item is that Jerry Reynolds be appointed as citizen representative to the Committee of Adjustment for the remaining term until November 14, 2022, or until his successor is appointed. Moved by Counselor Beatty and seconded by Counselor Ritzma. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item 5.2, at an in-camera session held earlier this afternoon, persuasive to Municipal Act 2001, there were the following items considered. Labor relations or employee negotiations. Proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board. An advice set is subject to solicitor-client privilege. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or a local board employee, and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege. At the in-camera session, direction was given on all of those items. Item six, there are no hearings or deputations and presentations. So we'll go to item seven, which is a proclamation request from the Fung-Loy-Koik Institute of Taoism. And it's that Stratford City Council proclaimed November 7 as Tais Tai Chi Arts 20th Anniversary Day in the city of Stratford in recognition of Fuk Loh Koi's journey of 50 years. Moved by Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor Bunting. Discussion. If not, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item 7.2 is a proclamation of Waste Reduction Week. And that City Council proclaimed the week of October 19 to 25 as Waste Reduction Week in the city of Stratford to help educate and engage Ontarioians about waste reduction. Mover, Counselor Vazalacos. Seconder, Counselor Beatty. Thank you. Discussion. If not, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.3 is a resolution driveway restoration for 109 Redford Crescent. And staff recommend that the request to have the city restore the driveway at 109 Redford Crescent with decorative concrete be denied, and that the existing driveway restoration practices of topsoil and seed standard concrete in Ashfall continue. Counselor Bunting moving. Seconder, Counselor Seven. Discussion. Counselor Seven, then Counselor Ritzma.
I think I just wanted to confirm that they will still have the option to receive the funds in lieu to put toward the concrete themselves.
Mr. Delovick?
Yeah, through your worship, that has been our standard practice over the years, that if owner wants the cash instead, we will provide them with the money. And then we do get a release from them saying that they're taking the money and we're just doing the work. And some, we do that because in some cases, people want to redo their entire driveway differently from what they had, so they'll take the cash and do the work themselves.
Thank you.
Counselor Ritzma?
Yeah, a question, and perhaps this is to Director Delovick. In the past, have we not, as a council, chosen to reimburse for the full amount if the homeowner has done upgrades, and in this case, the colored concrete? And with the amount that they can take in lieu of cover those costs to replace that colored concrete?
Through your worship, there was one instance where we did some work on a where the water department did some work on a driveway and ended up doing some restoration work with stamped concrete, which was different than what we normally do on construction projects. And in that instance, the homeowner wanted us to replace the entire driveway, and council said, no, they would not. And so the work was done to restore it to decorative. And which was contrary to what our practices on reconstruction projects. And as I noted here, if we go down that road, then we're going to start having to deal with all the other landscaping features that are located within the right-of-way. You know, we've had people come in the past with respect to sprinklers that have been dug up as a result of works done and looking to the city for restoration. And we've denied those requests in the past.
Thank you. Counselor Ritzma, you had a follow-up, then Counselor Henderson.
Yes, thank you, if I may. I viewed the concrete driveway. And certainly, we want to encourage our residents to add to and beautify their curbside, you know, curbside drives. And this was a beautiful driveway. And I'm hoping council will support the idea of replacing it back to where it was. Because it, and it's not a very old driveway. It's a wonderful, you know, looking driveway. And I would encourage, I would love to see it being replaced to what it was pre-construction.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson?
Hi, I was just wondering, I read the letter, and I didn't see that there's a timeline. Like, I'm assuming they have to let you know before we are starting to pave in that area. Like, are they aware that there's a deadline for deciding to whether they want to take the money and do it themselves or not?
Through the chair, I mean, there were letters provided at the beginning of it. We can follow up with this particular homeowner. And as noted, we can follow up with the other two homeowners. And the other challenge is when we get into decorative driveways like this is trying to match. And in this case, for 109 Redford, you know, we could go back to the contractor that did the driveway a couple of years ago. Fortunately, they were a local contractor. The challenge is, in some of these driveways, as they get older, colors fade. Can you match? Can you find the contractor who originally put it in? Or a contractor who's got the same stamps that are used to provide that decorative feature? So those are all the challenges that go into trying to do that. And quite frankly, as the driveway gets older, it becomes more and more difficult to actually match to what they have from a decorative perspective and have it look the same. And as noted with the one that we did recently in another driveway, where we couldn't match up. And because you get different dyes that are mixed, you know, the color may have changed from the last time it was used from a dye, or that dye is no longer being made. These are all the issues that come up when trying to match these things. And it is, and it is difficult doing it. But, you know, once again, we can follow up with those homeowners here that haven't made a decision. As I believe some owners feel that maybe, you know, council will restore it to decorative. I think there's one homeowner who mistakenly believes that we're going to replace their entire driveway because we won't be able to match it properly.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson?
I already asked mine.
I just make sure you didn't have a follow-up, that's all.
No, that's fine, as long as they're, just as long as, you know, they go out and do the driveway, and then the person goes back and says, oh, I didn't know they were doing it already. Like, just want to make sure they're aware there's a deadline for letting the city know, so.
Counselor Ritzma, anything further?
Yes, if I may. So to that end, to the comments made by the director, this is a relatively new driveway, and the contractor is still in the area. So I don't know how those two pieces would come in here. Because I'm certain that it could be matched and could be done by the same contractor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It's moved and seconded. Seeing no other hands, all those in favor of the motion. Opposed, if any. That's one opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.4 is a resolution. It's a request for council's consent to the lease of space by the Huron-Purth Public Health. And the staff recommendation that Stratford City Council consider that adopt the following resolution. And it is, whereas the Board of Health for Huron-Purth Unit requests consent from the Corporation of the City of Stratford to lease space at 135 Wallace Avenue North in Listowel. And that it be persuasive to the Health Promotion and Protection Act. And that we grant consent to the Board of Health for the Huron-Purth Health Unit to lease space at the real property known as 135 Wallace Avenue North. Counselor Vazalacos will move. Counselor Henderson will second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Item 7.5 is a lease agreement for the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation with the city of Stratford for 82 Erie. And the recommendation is that the city of Stratford enter into a lease with Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation for the lease of a portion of the space at 82 Erie from January 1, 2021, until December 31, 2025. And that the clerk and the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement. Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Ritzma. Discussion. Counselor Henderson?
I was just curious. I thought we were really tight for space in that building, that we've been trying to find more space. Just, I'm assuming it's going to be up on the third floor?
Mr. Delovick, I'll leave that answer to you.
Yeah, through your worship, no, we're making some changes here at 82 Erie. We've had a lot of offices that actually were quite large. For instance, the office that I was in has been divided up. And by focusing in on what staff needs for workspace, we were able to come up with the space that could accommodate all that was required for social services, as well as allowing Invest Stratford to come into the building.
Counselor Clifford?
I was just going to ask, through the mayor, is there a cost for upgrading the offices? Like, do we have to put new carpet, new painting, new doors? And if there is, how much is that?
Through your worship, this is part of the greater project that council approved a few months ago here at 82 Erie Street. The improvements, and part of it, Invest Stratford was contributing $100,000 towards the leasehold improvements that are being undertaken. And as well, they'll be paying a yearly, as per the agreement, the yearly rental amount for leasing the space as well towards the the heat, the electricity, the custodial services, et cetera.
Okay, anything further? If not, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item 7.6 is a resolution with regards to the city of Stratford 2020 Boardwalk Project Review. And that staff recommendation is that the project, Boardwalk Project Review be received for information, and that staff, along with Invest Stratford, prepare a report for the 2021 patio boardwalk season for council's consideration in January or February of 2021. Counselor Clifford moving. Counselor Burbak seconding. Discussion. Counselor Vazalacos.
I'm assuming that when the report comes back in January, that we'll have sort of options around what it would look like for the finances around these boardwalks? And the use of the parking spots and all that kind of stuff?
I think staff and Invest wanted some time to see the second wave of the pandemic and understand the financial implications and some of the challenges.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything further? If not, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item 7.7 is a resolution for Lights on Stratford Winter Festival of Lights Progress Report. It's a staff recommendation that the Lights of Stratford 2020 to 2021 Fest will be approved by council to take place, subject to necessary approvals and permits being obtained. And that exhibits may be installed in the following locations. Market Square from November 19 until February 14, 2021. Tom Patterson Island from December 10, 2020, until February 14, 2021. And Shakespeare Gardens from December 31, 2020, to February 14, 2021. And that organizers enter into an agreement with the city for use of the space to ensure the facilities are returned to their prior condition. The CAO will be authorized to sign the use of space agreements. And that the request for a budget of $21,000 plus HST to approve for snow clearing and de-icing in the market square between November 20 and 19, 2020, and February 14, which is outside of the 2020 snow budget. Counselor Beatty and Counselor Bunting moving. Seconding. Discussion. Counselor Vazalacos?
I just had a quick question. Usually, if we're approving things that are outside of the budget, we have a sense of where that money is going to come from. Is that just going to come from the operating reserve?
Ms. Baroness is on the phone, the acting director.
Yes, through your worship, the CIO and I have discussed that there are some winter control reserves. But we have decided, because the costs are unknown, we will just let them flow through as expenses. And at the end of the year, we will determine whether our snow plowing is truly over budget or whether our hydro is over budget. And at that point, we may just let them be absorbed through the normal city surplus deficit.
Thank you.
Anything further? If not, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Thank you. Item eight is business for which previous notice has been given, and there's none scheduled. Item nine is reported to the standing committees. And item 9.1 is reported to the Social Services Committee. And the Social Service Committee dated October 13, 2020, recommended the following. Item 9.11, federal safe restart funding for childcare in early years in the city of Stratford, County of Perth, and Town of St. Mary's. And that 9.12, Social Service Relief Fund Phase II Allocation be approved. And item 9.13, Addictions Treatment Program Agreement with Choices for Change Alcohol, Drug, and Gambling Council Services be approved. Counselor Henderson will move, seconded by Counselor Ritzma. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Item 9.2 is the report of the Community Services Committee dated October 13, 2020. And they have one recommendation. And then, and one other item, which is sanctioned pickable tournament and 2022 Pickable Ontario Championships be considered and referred to community services staff. And item 9.22 is online learning with regard to using city space to be conducive for online learning. Counselor Beatty, as chair, you'll move that. Seconder. Counselor Burbak, thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Item 10 is notice of intent. Item 10.1 is notice for public meeting under the Planning Act. Is scheduled to hold a pub, the city of Stratford is scheduled to hold a public meeting on Thursday, October 29, 3:30 PM via Zoom. Here, all interested persons with respect to the following planning applications under Section 34 of the Planning Act. Z03-20 for 533 Romeo Street South. Z04-20 for 3797 Downey Road 112. And Z05-20 for 1041 Erie Street. And that's a matter of information. Item 11 is the reading of the bylaws. And there are five bylaws that can be taken at this time. 11.1 is Agreement with Choices for Change. 11.2 is the appointments to the advisory committees. 11.3 is amendments to the procedural bylaw to conduct digital meetings. 11.4 is a designation of 265 St. David Street. And 11.5 is an agreement with SEECO for lease of space in the City Hall Annex at 82 Erie. And they can be taken collectively upon unanimous approval. Counselor Henderson and Counselor Vazalacos will move. They be taken collectively. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. First and second reading is moved by Counselor Bunting and Counselor Beatty for bylaws 11.1 through 5 to be read a first and second time. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that carries. A third and final reading, Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Seven for bylaws 11.1 through 5. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that carries. Thank you. The consent agenda has been circulated, and there are agenda items 089 to 093. Is there anything anyone would like to bring forward? Seeing none, we'll go to new business. Counselor Ritzma?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just a question for our clerk or our deputy clerk, Mr. Fuller, Mr. Bantock, regarding parking and the status with regards to publicizing of the free parking no longer in in the case that we're no longer in the free parking. So I received a call from a visitor stating that they parked. They believed that it was still free parking. They received a ticket. And I'm just wondering, through you, your worship, how is that information being shared? Whether, is it a billboard coming into town? Is it at the meters that we are no longer a free parking situation?
Sure, I'll invite the deputy clerk forward at this time to address the matter. Mr. Bantock?
Through Mayor Matheson to Counselor Ritzma. So when we had free parking during the months leading up to August 30, we had communications going out on our website through the town, or the city crier, as well as on social media. We had signs on the pay-by-plate machines as well that indicated that parking was free, just so that no one paid by mistake. And then we also had three larger signs that were placed throughout the city, just because we weren't able to put signs on all the meters, just so that it was as common knowledge as possible when traveling around the city. When council decided in early August that parking, free parking would no longer be extended, those same mediums were used to communicate out that parking would no longer be free. We also reached out to the BIA and other stakeholders just to let interested parties know that parking would no longer be free as well. And then those display signs were removed from around the city just to indicate that parking was no longer free.
Anything further? Thank you. Counselor Gaffney?
Thank you, worship. And through you, at the market on Saturday, I had a couple people stop me and ask me about the rules or the procedure around using the walking track in the Rotary complex. And I wonder if I could get, if we could publicly state generally what the hours are and any other precautions or expectations for people to use the indoor walking track now?
Mr. St. Louis, if you're on the line, I'll turn to the Director of Community Services.
Through the mayor, we have signage up now that lets people know how to use the walking track in terms of the amount of people that are allowed up there signing in, in terms of keeping track of who's using the walking track, just in case there's a tracking issue. And the hours are posted on the front. What we can do is put some more information out on the website and maybe on Facebook.
Counselor Gaffney?
Thank you, Mr. St. Louis. I wonder if we could, if possible, to publish that in the town crier also? Just sort of some of that information?
The clerk has nodded with that.
Okay, thank you.
It'd also be good if we continue to ask people to go to the city's website, where all of that information is posted, so we don't create a duplication where they expect it to be in the town crier as well.
My apologies, your worship, but it was actually a couple of elderly people that didn't have ready access to a computer, so. But I did tell them not to start out, but they corrected me. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. Anything further? If not, a motion to adjourn for recess and reconvene in Infrastration, Transportation, and Community Safety. Moved by Counselor Seven, Counselor Burbak seconding. Discussion. All in favor? And that's carried. All turned over to Counselor Vazalacos, as chair of infrastructure.
Okay, I'd like to call the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee to order. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Counselor Ritzma?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, item, Agenda Item 8.1, Kelly's Lane. I declare conflict as the owner of that lane. Thank you.
So the subcommittee, item number three is Subcommittee Minutes. They're there for anyone to review. We do not have any delegations this afternoon. So we'll move on to item number five, which is reported to the project engineer. And item 5.1 is accessible on street parking spaces on Lakeside Drive. And there is a motion there, which is a subcommittee recommendation. And if there are any questions or a mover, that would be great. Counselor Burbak moving. Counselor Ritzma seconding. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. And then item number six is reported to the fire chief. And item 6.1 is participation in the Perth County Mutual Aid Plan. And there is a subcommittee recommendation there. Moved by Counselor, or moved by Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor Bunting. Are there any questions about this or clarification needed? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. And then moving on to report of the Director of Infrastructure and Development Services. And we have item 7.1, which is the Off-Road Vehicle Bylaw. And it's an update that reflects changes to provincial, to provincial law. And there is, there is a subcommittee recommendation there. So, can I get a mover and a seconder for that recommendation? Moved by Counselor Gaffney, seconded by Counselor Burbak. Are there any comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carry. And item 7.2 is mutual aid and assistance. Mutual Aid and Assistance Memorandum of Understanding for an Ontario Water and Wastewater Agency Response Network. There was a report that was included with the agenda. Are there any questions about that? Because it's a fairly new item. Seeing none, there is a subcommittee recommendation there. Moved by Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor Burbak. All in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carry. And then we did have an additional item, which were traffic concerns along Lakeside Drive. And there was a subcommittee discussion. And what came out of that was a resolution to add the speed of traffic and traffic flow to be added to the existing council decision regarding cycling and active transportation infrastructure around the river. We figured we just bundle the two items together in a single report because they seem to go together. So are there any comments or questions on that item? Seeing none. Would someone like to move the subcommittee recommendation? Moved by Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor Gaffney. Anything else? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carry. And the rest of the items under number eight are for the information of the committee, including a capital project update. Were there any questions around those just before we move on from them? Sometimes people have questions around the capital projects. Seeing none, I take the, oh, there's new business from the subcommittee, which was also just for information, sorry. So a motion to adjourn moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Burbak. All in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carry. Thank you.
Counselor Clifford is Chair of Finance. I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, your worship. I'll call to order the Finance and Labor Relation Committee. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof? None noted? Subcommittee, item three, Subcommittee Meetings. We don't have any delegations. Item five is a report of the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation. And the subcommittee's recommendation is that the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation report dated September 20 Report dated September 22, 2020 be received for information. Moved by Counselor Ritzma, seconded by Counselor Gaffney. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion? That's unanimous. Item 6.1 is the Stratford STA September 2020 Update. And we have a Subcommittee Recommendation Recommendation that Stratford Tourism Alliance Report dated September 22, 2020 be received for information. Moved by Counselor Bunting, seconded by Counselor Burbach. Any questions or comments on the STA? All in favor of the motion? That's unanimous. Item 7.1 is the Financial Statements for Festival Hydro Inc. And the staff recommendation that the Festival Hydro Inc. Financial Statements and Commentary for the period ending June 30, 2020 be received for information. Moved by Counselor Bunting, seconded by Counselor Beatty. Questions, comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. And item eight is the Financial Statements for Rizon for June 30, 2020. And the staff recommendation that the Rizon Festival Hydro Services Inc. Financial Statements and Commentary for the period ending June 20, 2020 be received for information. Moved by Counselor Gaffney, seconded by Counselor Ritzma. Questions, comments? All in our call question, all in favor? That's unanimous. The only item, the extra item was we talked about changes to development charges and there's a little comment there. Anything else for finance today? Motion to adjourn, Counselor Vazalakos, seconded by Counselor Burbach. All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous.
Counselor reconvene at this time? Are there any declarations of community interest stated in the committees? It should be restated now. Counselor Ritzma?
Yes, I had an item 8.1 in in Finance and Labor and also going back to an item in in camera session.
So that's actually Infrastructure Public Works.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. And the clerk has noted that. Seeing any others? Before we do the confirmatory bylaw, I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize and congratulate our Director of Infrastructure and Public Works, Ed Delovik. Ed has been with the city since 2013, has been involved in a number of projects such as the improvements to the Water Pollution Control Plant and the Organic Waste Collection, a number of important sewer and road projects within the city. He's been a valued member of our corporate leadership team. Ed has announced that he will be retiring from the City of Stratford in February of 2021. Mr. Delovik had had seven years with the City of Stratford and a previous 20 years with the City of Niagara Falls, as well as a lot of years in the private sector in the consultant and engineering world. And Ed, I know you're on the line with us on behalf of council and all the staff and the citizens of our community. We'd like to congratulate you and wish you all the best as you head to retirement. And thank you so much for all the leadership you've provided. And it's not goodbye. We've still got lots of meetings and things to do between now and then. But just really want to thank you for your leadership during this time. And I'll turn it over to you if you'd like to say a few words, Ed.
Thank you, worship, for the kind words. It was a very difficult decision for me. Still is with mixed emotions. I've enjoyed my time here. I've enjoyed working with members of council, the team here at the city. It's it's been a great seven and it'll be over seven years when it's all said and done. But again, it's it's been it's been it still is a tough decision for me and and I will I'll miss everything here. So thank you.
Well, thanks, Ed. And on behalf of all of us. Ed, one last thing I was supposed to say from a lot of the staff. They wanted me to recognize that you're an avid golfer and an average curler. So congratulations on both of those, too.
I'm a better curler than a golfer, that's for sure.
All right. Well, thanks so much. With that, we have the confirmatory bylaw that can be read a first and second time. At Counselor Vazalakos and Counselor Burbach. All those in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. Third and final reading is Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Bunting. All those in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a good afternoon.
Stay safe, everybody.
Oh, sorry. I guess we should get a motion to adjourn. The clerk really wants to get that. Counselor Ritzma and Counselor Vazalakos? All those in favor? And that's carried. Thanks so much. Have a good afternoon.